We're going to cut that deficit roughly in half at the end of this fiscal year and virtually eliminate it at the end of next fiscal year. So it'll be a two-year process, but the goal is to completely eliminate the fund deficits in all those funds. And one of the ways we're doing it is with the fee increases that we were discussing earlier. That will bring in some revenue. Recreation programs, there's also going to be some fee increases in those. I believe those have not been raised for three years. So those fees haven't been the same for three years. And the other way is the transfers from the corporate fund. We did stop transferring money into the parks fund starting this month, so this fiscal year's transfer to the parks fund will be less. And then proposed budget for next year, the transfers will be $60,000 less than current year. And the goal is to slowly wean those funds off the general fund.
And where will they come from?
Pardon me?
Where will the funds come from?
Well, the goal is to make them self-sufficient, that the revenues and the fees between the expense cuts and the new revenues, that hopefully the funds can be self-sufficient. That's the goal, anyway, is to have them self-supporting to the greatest extent possible. It may not be 100% achievable, but we're going to try and get as close as we can.
Vitas?
Yes, sir.
You said the transfer is $60,000 less than the corporate?
The total transfers proposed for next year will be $60,000 yet less than budgeted this year. And if I can grant my budget.
Okay, yeah, yeah. So that's for parks and rec, right?
That's total transfers out of the general fund.
Oh, okay.
The exact amount to each fund will vary because we don't know where revenues and expenses are going to come in exactly. So we'll probably have to make adjustments. You know, one may get more, one may get less, but overall, the plan is to be able to reduce the transfers by $60,000 out of the general fund.
So based, Mr. Pro.
President Blankensack. I got that last one.
Trustee. Thank you. So using the current math, there's no way that it'll become self-sufficient. I mean, you're basically, I don't want to say playing an accounting game, but you're pulling money out, you're transferring money out of the corporate fund and trying to reduce that for years to come, hoping that on the other side, the income increases at the same rate as what you're transferring now. But I don't see how that can happen when, you know, the prices are, you know, a moderate increase. Is there like a break-even number that you know where things need to be added in order for it to become self-sufficient?
Well, obviously, the pricing will have to come from the parks and rec department. My immediate goal was to eliminate the negative balance. So, you know, with the numbers we're proposing, we're going to get the balance from a negative $200,000 to zero. So at least we'll have a clean slate starting forward. So if we can become self-sufficient, at least we don't have a deficit to overcome. If we can't, at least we hope to greatly reduce the dependency on the general fund. I mean, we've been transferring $945,000 out of the general fund every year for a long time. So, you know, it's, it may take baby steps, but, you know, if we can start reducing the transfer now, it's still going to be a positive impact. We may not be able to totally eliminate it, but at least by getting rid of the negative balance, we're starting with a clean slate, and then we can establish a goal as to how much can and should we subsidize, if at all, you know, in the future going forward.
So this year, if I'm reading updated information, this is February 17th document this year, I think there's a projection in here for 2011, 2012, transfer from corporate fund into swimming pool fund is $160,000.
Are you looking at, are you looking ahead to this slide? We can jump ahead, or if you wish.
I'm looking at.
Here's the numbers.
Okay.
There's the $200,000 deficit coming in after this year. That's even with suspending the transfers. We're going to cut the deficit in half from $200,000 to about $100,000. And then next year, it'll be virtually eliminated. Still showing minus $7,000, but we expect there to be some money left in the hotel motel tax fund, so we can easily make this number zero. So basically, we'll overcome a $200,000 deficit over the two years. Now, what we do going forward, of course, will depend on pricing policy and what the expenses are, but at least, at least we've gone from this minus $207,000 to zero, so that it's not a drag on the general fund balance.
Okay. I guess the piece I'm missing is, how are we going to make up with the money, make up for the money that you're transferring? I mean, you're no longer going to rely on the general fund, but what's in the plan to make up the difference that you're not going to transfer anymore?
Well, I don't have a plan to eliminate the transfer this year. That'll be in future years. Right now, the best we can do this year is reduce it by $60,000.
Okay.
It's a start. I mean, I'm not going to stand there and say we're going to eliminate it totally, because, like you said, that's going to be difficult. But at least we're going in that direction. We're reducing it, and we hope to reduce it further in future years if we can. But that's the goal.
Okay.
There's close to $1 million in fee revenue between the parks recreation and swimming pool funds. So, I mean, you can project, you know, going forward in terms of the transfers, you know, what you would need to do over a period of 10 years, for instance, if you set that as an objective to get whole within that time period. But it's certainly within the capability of the fund to get whole. It just depends on how aggressively you want to set your fee increases and what time period you want to do that on.
We had a minus $100,000 cash flow last year. This year, we're projecting a positive $100,000 cash flow. So with a positive cash flow, at least you could stop working in the right direction and maybe build up some reserves so that you can get more self-sufficient.
I guess my only point is that this is great, and I appreciate this exercise very much, but, you know, there's a point at which you can only raise rates so much before you balance yourself out of the market. So then you start thinking, well, how am I going to come up with a difference that equates to what is not being transferred anymore? So, you know, it's sort of a broken plan. I mean, you're going to look good this year, maybe next year, but, you know, unless...
Well, don't forget, there is a portion of the tax levy that does get funnel into these. It's not just user fees they're getting. They do get a tax levy.
Okay.
So if a future board decides you're going to have to live with whatever you get in that tax levy, that's what we'll have to do. We'll have to find a way to live with that.
Did you say the hotel tax funds?
The hotel tax helps fund the parks fund, not the recreation fund. But I believe the parks and the recreation both get a tax levy. Is that correct?
Yes. But there's, you know, the tax levy for the parks fund is, you know, like $290,000, and the tax levy for the recreation fund is another $290,000. There's no way we're ever going to have, where we don't have a transfer in. It's just a service that we're going to have to apply, supply the residents, and it's going to have to be subsidized to some extent with a transfer from the corporate fund. Because you can't raise the fees high enough to cover, what is it, almost $800,000 transfer. You know, if you did, nobody's going to, you might as well just close it down. You know, so part of what the taxes besides the levy, the taxes that the residents pay, are going to have to go for a transfer to the parks and the rec and the swimming pools. Because that's what, that's what you do as a government, just apply those services to the residents. So we're never going to make that transfer go away 100%. We just have to try to make it less, the least amount possible.
That's correct.
That's the way I see it.
That's absolutely correct.
That's my point exactly, too.
But it still should be a goal, even though you know you're not going to totally achieve it, but you will try and achieve it to the extent that's practical and possible.
Yeah.
Knowing that you will still likely have to subsidize to a certain extent.
Okay, thanks.
Some of the things we did to achieve the balanced budget, again, we did remove all the capital requests, and those will be dealt with separately in the equipment replacement fund and in the building and land funds. However, there are four, what we feel, more of the critical projects that we would like consideration to move ahead sooner, and those are listed here. The roof of the public works building, the repairs to the pools, those have to be done for the pools to be able to open on time, history museum repairs, and the fire station driveway. All these will take some lead time. They will need specs prepared in some cases. They will need bidding in some cases. So at the proper time, and I know if tonight's the proper time, we would request that the funds be placed in the equipment replacement fund for these four items. And it's about $95,000 we're talking. This would be proceeds from the bond issue that would be earmarked for this.
Why would we put it in the vehicle replacement fund?
It's equipment replacement fund. That's where all these items will, no, this one's going to be...
These are buildings.
All right, this is, I'm sorry, that's the building and land fund. I mixed up, sorry.
Thank you.
You are correct. It would be in the building, building fund for these four items, not the equipment fund. So I don't know, do we need to take any formal action to do that? Do we have to amend the budget or just present the budget with these changes with a consensus?
I guess we'd like some sense from the board. These were, these were items that were all listed in the original proposal with the $500,000, and I know there's certainly concerns about some of the vehicle replacement, but these are items that we felt were more critical that we wanted to bring to your attention this evening, and we had listed these previously for consideration under the bond proceeds.
And I do have Greg and Marlon here that can provide any detail on any of these items or if you need more background.
Mr. President Proton?
Trustee Boewinkle.
Just refresh my memory, what repairs to the pools will be made this year? I know that's something we're going to need to talk about and plan for, so we can talk about that.
Marlon's our expert.
Yeah.
Virginia Grand Baker Act, we need to replace the drains with suction or put some devices that limit the suction for entrapment purposes, and we need to do that before we can open. It was originally scheduled, all public pools needed to be in compliance last year, but because of the amount of pools, there was no way that everybody can be in compliance, so they extended it a year, which is this year.
Yeah, our drawings were caught in that limbo area, not being able to review, so they extended our time. So all the plans have been reviewed and approved, and actually, the cost is less than what is currently budgeted. But we're going to need some room to move there, only because we're going into older structures, and we want to make sure that if a liner's damaged or something's damaged in the construction of these new grates and installation of these new grates, that we have a cushion that we can repair and get those pools open on time. So we'll be ready to go.
That's actually one of my other questions. What other repairs are on the docket? Is there anything else that we can consider doing this year? I know there's a whole scroll, long list of things we need, but, you know, we're going to just check in that list off.
Our goal, I think our goal right now for the swimming pools is to get them open, get them safe for our public, clean and operational for our pool season. I think long-term plans for the pool, we'll work on those this spring, taking pictures, documenting as with our park and rec commission, and presenting different ideas for next year, and, you know, some way to move forward, because both of our pools are getting old. We've got a 58-year-old pool and, you know, a 40-year-old pool. We're going to need something soon, and so I don't want to hide anything. I want everything out in the open, and we're going to take this year to document that, and Greg and I will work on getting a report to the builder's trustees.
That'd be great, with some sort of plan of action. I mean, anything we can do to start chipping away at that.
Well, I think if you, I'll remember we'd be up here at a meeting when we were looking at doing a referendum, you asked my opinion about Lufkin Pool. There's not much repairs left to do. When it goes down, it's 58 years old. It's going to be time to replace it. I have to be truthful with you on this. We're coming to a point of an end on it.
Right.
So we need to be proactive and maybe come up with plans for the future, whether it's a year or three years down the road. We want to keep it open and keep it nice for the public in its current form.
Yeah, that's why planning now is...
Yes, absolutely.
We need to do that. I know it's like kind of the pink elephant in the room. We're always afraid to kind of talk about the pools, but I think we...
Well, I have to be truthful with you. It's given this community a great service for a long time. We cannot argue what that pool's given us, but we're running to the end of the cycle. Actually, we're beyond most cycles of any other community pools. It's done very well for us.
Let's see what kind of plan, you know, we can look at incremental plan for however many years out, you know, just look as far ahead as we can and just plan accordingly.
I would agree.
That's, we're going to do that this summer. That's our goal for this summer, is start working on a plan for the next two to five years.
Right.
All right, okay, thank you.
Trustee Blankensack.
Hi, Marlon. I think, let me ask you a basic question. Is Lufkin Pool safe?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so no wall's going to come falling down?
No, we monitor it every year. Things have moved a little bit here and there over the years since the liner has been in. Nothing is unsafe. If it was unsafe, I would not open it, plain and simple. I'd put a red flag on it right away.
Because there was a rumor going around, I think, that a wall...
There's some walls that were shifting, but not breaking, not anything. It is safe. I would, if I had any doubt at all in my mind, I would close it.
So no wall will fall down?
No, I would never do that.
Great, thanks. Any other question? Trustee Boltis.
You said, you know, it's near the end of its life cycle, some of these pools, or the day is coming. What do you mean? What's, what's the indications that you see? What's going on? And what are we looking at? What are you calling the end of its life cycle? Why? You know, what's happening?
Our mechanical equipment, first of all, if you were to look at the filter room in the old concession stand area, it's pretty much starting to lean and sink and fall down. We're probably, our equipment is 58 years old in there also. It's just beyond its life cycle, and new codes, if we were to go to do something new, it would be a total different reconstruction. Concrete is sinking in the back around our filter pit. It's probably dropped in 15 years, five or six inches. It's on, I believe, a peat bog right there. The concrete decking around has already been overlaid once, I would believe, somewhere in 15 to 18 years ago, a little bit before my time. So we are now getting double cracks forming around that we caulk up each year, and the walls are starting to show wear. And I would open it up to any of the trustees, when we drain this thing to clean it, please, if you want me to call you, I will. I can show you what is happening in there and what we checked to make sure that it's safe. Life cycles for pools in this northern part of Illinois, you know, if you get 30 years out of them, you're doing good. I mean, we've really got a lot of great use out of this pool.
I see that the water budget is twice as it was last year. Is there leaking problems?
We had a major leak over at Jefferson Pool, which we have repaired. That is correct. One of our main pipes going into the pool at first, and we had to go in and take the deck apart and repair it. And we probably lose a million, a million and a half gallons a year per pool, only from use, evaporation, and they have minor leaks that we can never find them all, whether it's in the gutter systems we can't see or things like that. But they say a normal child jumping out of a pool will carry six to seven gallons with them, so you put 300 kids in there, you can see where it all goes.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Any questions on the other items?
Anybody from the public have a comment on that? I haven't asked that yet, I'm sorry. Nobody? Okay, thanks.
I have one question.
Oh.
What's the lead time on your fix it? What you guys need for time? I mean, you got to start right now, or what's the...
Our basic time schedule will be, come towards the end of March, we're going to start going in there and doing complete deck cleanup, checking all the equipment, obviously above the water levels. So we'll go through all that, we'll start checking our buildings. As we march into April, mid-April is when it really starts, we'll start clearing and cleaning the pools themselves. Lufkin Pool being a little bit different, we don't like to leave the water out of the pool very long, because obviously the gravity water holds the liner down much better, and as we get a little rain, a little type of separation from the concrete surface. But April 15th is when we start digging into pools, all the cracks, the chipping paint and things like that. At Jefferson Pool, we'll start chipping away at this. But we generally won't, we'll do minor repairs, but when the final freeze thaw sessions are over towards the end of April, May, is when we'll start seeing most of this falling in the pool bottom of Jefferson Pool. And at the same time, we'll start draining the pool over at Lufkin and inspecting the liner and things like that. So it starts at the end of March, it goes right up to opening, and then we wait for that, whatever few days we get to paint Jefferson Pool, we hope for the best, we have a couple 70-degree days where we just go in and crash it out. And in our pool budget, you'll see there's a $50,000, $100 line item in there, that's what the supplies and the pool paint costs every year. Oh, the Virginia Grand Baker grates that will be installed will be done, obviously, when we are drained down and ready. So they'll be done at the same time and then done and refilled for the season.
Is that done in-house?
No, that's contracted. So with the drawings and the engineering and everything, that was done in the vicinity. We don't want to touch that one. We want to leave the liability in the contractors.
President Davis? Trustee Taglia?
Marlon, could you explain to us what exactly that term means regarding the drain, the new regulation?
Virginia Grand Baker Act came about, I believe it was actually in a hot tub, right? Child or was it a pool?
It was a child, I think it was a pool over here got entangled.
And they drowned, basically. There was a couple instances, some a little worse than what that one was. So what they did is they determined to pass regulations for special grading and/or main suction lines from the pools, you know, so that nobody can be entrapped. These grates have bumps and bridges and all sorts of things. And in some pools cases, they've had to redo the whole main line and make them larger. So we're fortunate enough where ours will work just with special grading. We are very lucky. Many pools have gone through much more expensive programs to get there, and they were newer pools than ours, so we're very fortunate. And the Jefferson main pool, we have no main drain, so we do not have to worry about it. We're very safe on that one.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President Proton?
Trustee.
Do you know if there's any grants out there available to help with the infrastructure issues that we're going to be facing? I'm sure there are. I don't know any off the top of my head.
I believe what we'll probably do, which most recreation departments and park districts do, is once we get a design of what we're going to do, whether it's at Lufkin or Jefferson, major rehab, major replacement, whatever it is, OzLED grants do cover those, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
They actually, 13 years ago, they covered the rehab of the building of the small pool at Jefferson and the liner and things over there. So yes, those, those prospects are out there.
Definitely go for that, yeah, why not? Anything else that might be available out there?
We'll hit them all.
Yeah, yeah, let's go for it.
All right. Any other questions on like the roof or the museum or fire station line up there?
Any questions, ladies and gentlemen?
Might as well ask the history museum repairs. Is that the caulking that you and I talked about before, or that's done?
The caulking was done in-house, we did that.
So that's done, okay.
The museum repairs are actually the two main structural beams that run east and west on the building, both front and back. And how these repairs came to be known is, we were asked to repair the end of one of these beams on the east side off Villa Avenue. There's a decorative wood out there. So we went up there, carpenter went and inspected, and it fell off in his hand. We realized the main structural beams were starting to rot back 18 to 20 inches. We don't know how far back it goes. That was as far as we can reach. But what has to be done is, is we're going to have to rent a lift, we're going to have to get my specialist leave worker, he's a carpenter also, and we had planned on hiring a contract carpenter to work with him, someone with more skilled labor than any, you know, in the carpentry field than my other staff, to work with up there. And there'll be several different versions of how we're going to repair it, whether we splice another beam into it, whether we use the new resin compounds to repair it. We don't know yet till we fully see what the damage is. So that's what that money's for. We need to get this repaired, because it is starting to rot back.
Any other questions?
From Marlon? Or Greg?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Great job. Is that yours? It's yours.
Are we ready to move on? Fellow board members, the manager would like to have an idea if the board is comfortable with putting this with the bond issue money.
These four, these four items are $95,000, yes. I believe the public works building is $35,000, the repair to pools is $15,000, the history museum is $25,000, and the fire department driveway is about 15 to 20, I believe.
All right, you know, we add it up to 95, I don't have the breakdown.
Close.
Should there be a consensus here? Do we have a consensus to move this forward?
Yes, trustee Taglia?
Yes.
Trustee Bowwinkle?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Blankensack?
Yes.
Trustee Boltis?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and make those changes and put that in the final version of the budget for adoption. Okay, ready to move on to the water fund. Highlights here, we are not proposing any rate increases this year. So far, we have not heard from the DuPage Water Commission that they are, City of Chicago is not proposing a rate increase. Now, whether DuPage Water Commission follows suit is unknown at the time, but if there is a rate increase, I'm sure our village president will be weighing in on that issue since he is now a member of the water commission. As far as we know right now, there is no, no rate increase proposed, and we're not proposing one either. We do have a positive operating cash flow, which means we have enough revenue coming in to cover our operating expenses and to pay off our loans. We have about four years left on our EPA loan for the ABC streets.
Four years left.
We did just complete two water main projects this year that were over $2 million, but we did get $540,000 in principal forgiveness on those, so that was the equivalent of a grant. But we will have to start paying those loans back. We do need to watch water revenue closely, because our usage has been decreasing. We expect that's a combination of wet weather the last few years and the number of vacant homes in the village. So our water usage has actually gone down about 10% over the last two years, so we will be watching the revenue very closely. In the water fund, we do have lower salary and benefits expenses proposed for next year, mainly due to the early retirements. We have lowered some of our contractual services to help balance the budget and actually reduce expenses. We are ahead of the game by a few years in our master water main replacement plan, mainly because of the loan projects, but we are still going to be continuing them, but we are going to be continuing, continuing them at a reduced level, at least until we get the first large loan payout paid off, and then, then we can go forward again on that. Just here's a summary of the revenues, main one being the water charges. Last year, we did budget for increased revenue due to a rate increase, passing on costs from the DuPage Water Commission. As you can see, our projections are about $130,000 less than budgeted, so the water usage is coming down. We're proposing a modest recovery this year, but we're going to keep an eye on that. Here's a summary of our operating cash flows for the next few years. Coming in, we had about a $1.6 million balance available in the water fund. We're proposing a positive cash flow, about $384,000. Large part of that is due to loan money. The expenses actually occurred the prior years, but we didn't get reimbursed till this year, so it was catching up. So this year, we're looking at a $384,000 positive cash flow. Next year, our operating costs, as you can see, will be positive, but we do have a capital project that will require a local match. So in order to get the local match, we're going to have to dip into the fund balance a little bit to cover the grant. But overall, from beginning of last year to end of this year, we're still going to increase by a few hundred thousand dollars. So we gained a little bit here, we're going to give some of it back here, and overall, we're still going to end up with a higher fund balance than we, than we started at the beginning of the year. Questions on the... Questions on the water fund? Trustee Bowwinkle?
What capital items are on the docket?
We have the North Yale Water Main Replacement Project.
That'll come out of this?
That comes out of here, right. That will be seventy percent funded through a community development block grant, and then this is the thirty percent local share to cover that capital project. And that's really the only capital project we have proposed in the water fund for next year. We will be doing some in-house water main replacement. We try and do some of that every year, and that will continue.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Hey, wastewater fund. Again, no proposed rate increase. Our last increase in the wastewater fund was in May of 2010. So we're holding the line on that. Again, we are projecting a positive cash flow that is including paying off the loans at this point. Because sewer is also billed based on water consumption, we also see a decrease in sewer bills because it's billed off the same usage. There is one position that we are proposing a transfer from the water fund to the sewer fund. When we have, when we had the early retirements a few years ago, the people that were left in the department, we did not make any adjustments budget-wise. The person we're proposing to move actually is doing sewer work, so it makes more sense to budget him in the wastewater fund. So that's strictly for budgetary purposes, but we're not adding any positions. And again, we have a lower contractual services and lower supplies. We pretty much made the same type of cuts that we did in the general fund, in the water and wastewater funds. We do have more projects, however, in the wastewater fund. We have proposing two sewer separation projects and one sewer relining project. Now, that's assuming we get the grant funding. For the one sewer separation project, that would be on West Division Street, that would be through the Community Development Block Grant Fund, seventy percent funding. We have tentative approval from DuPage County. However, this year, they're not sure if the federal government will be appropriating the money because of the change in leadership in Washington. So it's a conditional award pending what Congress does with the block grant program in general, which is uncertain at this time. So if there is an opportunity, I suppose, to express your views to your elected officials in Washington, this may be one project that we may want to try and support if needed. The other two projects, one is a sewer separation project on South Monterey Avenue and a sewer relining project in the northwest portion of the village. The funding for these projects would be coming from the 2008 flood. They're commonly known as the Hurricane Ike Grants. If we are awarded these projects, there would be no local match. However, at this point, we have no indication how many projects have been submitted, how many applications. We do know each county is going to get a minimum amount of funding, so at this point, we're hopeful, and we'll just wait and see. And if that gets funded, as I mentioned, there is no local match.
What if it doesn't get the grant?
Well, then...
That's forty-two thousand, right?
Pardon me?
That's forty-two thousand for the northwest area that we budgeted, forty-two-nine?
It's more than forty.
Oh, that's just the engineering service.
That's just the engineering service. Correct. And that would be a possibility if we don't get the grant funding. We could see if there's, you know, take some of the fund balance from the wastewater fund and go ahead and perform the engineering, get it shovel-ready, and then see if some other grant programs could come down. Generally, it's easier to get grants if you have the engineering completed. But for the Hurricane Ike, it's not necessary. They will fund engineering also, so we went ahead and submitted it with the engineering. But we could always decide to move ahead with the engineering at the time if we don't get the grant funding. We also have some remedial work at the treatment plant. EPA, every three years, does an evaluation of our sewer system and our treatment plant. And the last time around, they told us that even though the flights have not been functional for twenty years, that because they are part of the system, they have to be either removed or replaced. So we're going to go ahead and replace them.
Bees?
Yes, sir.
What are flights?
Flights are mechanical devices that basically scrape the debris from the bottom of the tank. They're like a conveyor.
I have to talk about all that.
And why don't we use them?
They kept breaking. Poor design. So hopefully, when we replace them, we can come up with a better design that will work this time. We also have the television inspection equipment rebudgeted. We're not sure if we're going to go forward with that or not, but it is in there. We did tentatively remove the private sector subsidies, and it's about the same amount. It's about sixty thousand dollars. So it's kind of a toss-up. Do we want to go ahead with the equipment purchase and get more future grants or can continue evaluating our system, or do we want to continue the subsidy? Or if revenue does improve, perhaps we can do both. But right now, based on what I'm seeing, I don't feel confident in proposing both of them. So that's probably something we need to discuss. If, well, want to discuss that tonight, that's fine. If we want to put on a future COW to discuss the subsidy programs, whether we want to continue them next year, that's something we can do also. But right now, there is no money allocated for the sewer reimbursement program.
So the subsidies, is that sewer hookup, or what exactly is all that?
It's a fifty-fifty reimbursement to assist with installation of check valves, overhead sewers, repair faulty sewer service lines, you know, with roads, point repairs, things like that. At one time, we were budgeting a hundred twenty thousand, then it went down to eighty, then down to forty. And as our fund balance was being depleted, we were allocating the money towards the public sewer system because this is a subsidy on the private sewer system. But it...
Where does the backyard drainage fall in that? Did we?
That comes out of the drainage fund. It's one of the capital funds. It does not come out of the wastewater fund. And that'll be discussed in two weeks when we discuss the capital funds. Again, as you can see, wastewater revenue, a little bit down from what we budgeted, but we are budgeting a modest recovery this year based on our more recent numbers. And cash flow-wise, very similar to the water fund. Start out with a five-hundred-seventy-four-thousand-dollar balance. We're going to add to it this year, again, mainly due to loan reimbursement money. Next year, we will be drawing it down, again, due to local match for the Division Street project. But overall, we are still going to end up about a hundred fifty thousand dollars ahead of our starting point last year. So over the two years, we're still gaining, even with having to subsidize the capital projects. Any questions on the cash flow and the wastewater fund?
Any questions? Trustee Bowwinkle?
In the grants and loans category, how much of that is loan versus grant funds?
Well, it's very easy. This is all loans from this year. This is all grants for next year.
Oh. That's pending if we get the grant.
That's pending if we... Well, the Division, we have tentative approval. The other two, we don't.
Any other questions?
Okay, I guess at this point, we can go through the...
We could go back to B. Yeah. Hotel tax and master.
Parks and Recreation, you have in your packet, you received a summary of significant changes in expenses in the Recreation Fund, Parks Fund, and Swimming Pool Fund. The detail, line item detail was previously provided in the total budget back in February, which I noted in the transmittal memo. We could walk through, start with Recreation Fund and walk through these changes and try to answer any questions you have with your staff here. I think within the Recreation Fund, we had some adjustments in salaries because of the former director and some ongoing payments made for the former director. We have tried to make reductions where possible. We are including, as you know, the two percent increase across the board for the union contracts and other employees, as well as the restoration of management salaries, to the extent it applies in these funds as well, Parks and Recreation, as well as water and sewer. I think the main change in the Recreation Department and the programs is the Fun Time Junction in both, you know, fall and summer programs. There's some increase there because of the popularity and the expansion of the program. But there would be corresponding fee increases as well to cover that. And then the reduction in section is in the gymnastics program where that's been reduced. And Greg can address, provide a little more detail in those two areas. But those are, I think, are the significant changes in the Recreation You could address those two programs specifically, Greg.
Gina is our resident expert. I know on Fun Time Junction, it's been really popular. We had to add a couple of classes. So in response, our expenses increased because of the additional instructors. The gymnastics contractual fees went down due to the gymnastics contractor pulling out of the program. And now we have, we're not going contractual. I believe we're going instructor-based and hourly rate so that those fees or expenses decreased.
We work directly with the Addison Park District for gymnastics, so it does come out of our 299, our contractual line. However, the provider through Addison has changed. And so what we are receiving in terms of revenue is increasing and our payout is decreasing based on the new provider. Addison hired hourly employees. So while we play, we will pay out of, continue to pay out of the 299, it is decreasing because of the arrangement that Addison now has with the instructors that are providing the program.
Typically, contractual instruction is higher than an hourly base instructors.
And then regarding Fun Time Junction, the numbers in this year's budget are really based on the actuals, excuse me, the numbers for next year's budget are based on the actuals for this year. We saw an increase in need, so we expanded to another classroom for the daycare, which is wonderful. And we have increased numbers of people coming through the doors. And we also feel that's a great sign in terms of the economic climate because people are going back to work, so they're using our service more. But consequently, we have to employ staff, you know, to cover the children that are in the program. There's very strict guidelines by DCFS. As you know, we're licensed by DCFS, and we have to stick to those ratios. So when we have more children, we need more staff. So it's a cause and effect.
And those increases in the expenditures for instructors will be covered by an increase in revenues. And all the programs, all of our programs are on break-even or more. So the revenues for the additional classes cover the cost of the expense of the instructors.
Are you all doing more publicity around the events?
You know, our publicity overall in Recreation has increased exponentially with a new staff person that started with us, that was working part-time and is now working in our office. She has a journalism degree and just kind of has her foot in the door in a lot of places. So...
She's concentrating on some media, getting the information out.
I do have a question. We haven't talked about this yet. Have we ever been reimbursed from District 45 for the first step program?
Absolutely.
We did receive that check?
Yes, that was a twenty-four thousand dollars from District 45 per year. We now have a cooperative agreement with the Head Start program, and they pay monthly, and they're right on schedule.
Yeah, I knew there was a problem with that for a while there. State wasn't paying.
They did reimburse us.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course, as you, you know, the school district reimbursement, they're funded by the state, whereas the Head Start is a federally funded program. So their money's a little bit more readily available than the state in the life funding.
Questions for board members?
Specifically on these two programs or all the Recreation Department?
All.
Okay. I have a question about the Oktoberfest expense budgeted for the coming year. I noticed now, looking at last year's revenues and expenses and comparing that to prior years, I noticed when we increased the number of days at Oktoberfest, our revenues went, didn't make a big change, but our expenses went up. And so it really didn't show, it didn't help our bottom line by adding another day. Was it four days rather than just three?
That's correct.
Did you look at that to see if we should go back to three days?
We are going back to three days.
We're proposing three days. That's what this budget...
To save some money.
Yeah. Because it just jumped right out at me that the extra day was costing us a lot of money.
Right. We're going back to three days.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
I have a question. Trustee Blanketson? Excuse my ignorance for this question, but is Twin Lakes complete, is it done?
Twin Lakes, Marlon's going to go out with bid specs for the playground, and we have to put the playground in and pierce, and that'll be it. Once the program's complete, then we'll submit the reimbursement from OSLAD.
Okay. And then I noticed that there are some expenditures for modifications or additions to Lyons Field Playground. Is that correct?
Are we at Fund Thirty-Six or is it...
It's about a NESRA.
It's the...
Yeah. Yeah, we have plans up. Excuse me one second. That's okay. Community Recreation Building, lobby, washrooms, office remodeling, is that we refer to, the forty thousand dollars? Other than that, we have a concrete path in there. That would, the concrete path for Twin Lakes Park is a concrete path that will come up, one we put in this last fall, from the main walk to the fishing pier to make sure that we are fully handicap accessible getting out to the handicap.
Oh, you know what I'm referring to? I'm sorry. Lyons Park Playground Design, thirty-five thousand.
That's under Fund Thirty-Six, right?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four. Am I missing it? Oh, she's right at the top. Similar to what Venus, exactly. Similar to what Venus is doing. We are looking at getting an architect in to start design on the playground area itself. That playground is currently one of our oldest. It's seventeen years old. We've got a lot of good years out of it. But we need to start redesigning the area. The basketball court is older than that. It's been resurfaced in the last eighteen years also. These are preliminary designs to start the groundwork. So if we have designs in hand, just like Venus, if grants are available, we can go for them. We currently have no designs on hand to be able to even go for a grant. So this will be the first step in that process of starting our design for Lyons Park Play Area.
Now, if I'm correct, it's going to be ADA accessible, right?
Everything will be ADA accessible. That is correct. That is our community park, center of town. Everything will be ADA accessible.
Any questions from board members?
I have.
Oh.
Trustee Blanketson? So I think it's a great project, no doubt about it. Seventeen years old. It probably has seen better days. Is this the right time to be doing it, though, with a really down economy?
In the NESRA fund, we do have funds available. Due to the special rec. tax levy, we roughly shanned two-hundred-and-eighty thousand to NESRA.
Eighty-nine.
Two-hundred. So those funds are available for us to use on certain projects that are, will be ADA accessible. So the funds are there. You know, we can do it now. We can do it three years from now. Being as old as the playground is, the funds are there, so we might as well take care of it.
Okay. Great.
We were actually talking about that with the former manager, Bob Neen, who was bringing that up. That was one of his projects he started for.
Yeah, well, this will be phased. Yeah, well, this will be phase one. I mean, this project you're looking at, I think, again during that referendum talk, you know, could be anywhere between 200 and 400,000, depending where we go, with new playground, new infrastructure, new basketball court type stuff.
Wow.
Yeah. It's a community-sized park. It's where people come off the paths. It's very busy every day. And a lot of, you know, baseball there, so there's all sorts of activities. Now, playground of that size averages between 60,000 and 80,000, just for a playground without installation.
And the design is 35,000.
That's just the start. That'll be phase one, to get it going, to get preliminary designs, to see which direction we want to go, and then phase two. It's just to get the architects working and things like that. And we'll be interviewing them, and they'll come to the Board, obviously, for professional services.
Meg, you know, everything we have budgeted in the NESRA fund is revenue neutral. Whatever expense we show, we show reimbursement from NESRA for that item, and that's the assumption this is based in.
Thank you.
Parks Fund next?
Do I go with the Parks Fund next?
Yeah. Next would be the Parks Fund regard to significant changes in the Parks Fund. Some salary and benefit reallocations in here. We had some changes with single employees that were replaced by employees with families, which had some push on the benefits, as well as the allocation of the director's salary, different from how it's been done in the past. So, see some bump in that area. You do have the effect, you know, in general, for all the employees of the 2% increase in salaries. And we have taken out the, you know, all the capitals, as Vitas has mentioned, have been taken out of this budget. That's a big change in the reduction. So, those are really the significant changes here. And of course, to the extent that these changes don't fully explain the overall reduction, it's because we've gone through the line items and reduced those wherever possible as well, knocking those down to 500 here, 1,000 there, to bring those more in line with current year expenditures and expectations for the coming year and trying to stay on the conservative side with doing that. So, those are the key highlights.
Any questions?
Swimming Pool Fund would be next. We do have some overall reductions in the Swimming Pool Fund, primarily, again, in the deferral of capital, some of the various capital equipment replacement and some of the maintenance. And some of these will be brought back under the capital budget discussion on the 21st based on priorities, what priorities are in each department. We'll be bringing some of those things back for your consideration on the 21st. And then there is an increase in the water and sewer charges for the Swimming Pool as well, was brought up earlier, I think, by Trustee Balthus. We had not charged for water in the past, and that's being added this year. And then there's been some increase in the sanitary sewer charges from Salt Creek as well in the current year that we're carrying that forward into this year. I don't know if we've fully evaluated that at this point, Vitas, on the sanitary sewer charges from the Salt Creek for the pool.
Well, we do get a bill. So, if there's a leak in the pool, we do get a sewer bill from Salt Creek Sanitary District for whatever water's going through that meter, because that's what they bill on, so.
So, there may be a bump this year that we may have to look at this account again in terms of, as Marlon mentioned, the leak had been repaired at this point, so that may have an effect to bring these costs down. But we haven't fully reviewed this line item yet. If anything, it would go down from where it is presently. The Hotel Tax, I think, is part of the Parks Fund, as again was mentioned earlier, the revenues that we generate from the Hotel Tax, I think about 75,000 a year. Our transfer directed at the Parks Fund to support the festivals, Oktoberfest, et cetera, and other parties that bring visitors to the community.
And for the first time in our history, we are taking in revenue from the Brer Rabbit Hotel.
Is it significant?
Yes, it is.
I'm kidding.
There's a market for it.
The Hotel Tax, that is for tourism, anything that has to do with tourism and parks, correct?
That's correct. It's typically transferred to the Parks Fund for their activities, the proceeds from the hotel motel tax.
Any questions from the Board on that? On there? On there? Okay. Motor fuel.
Motor fuel tax?
Motor fuel tax. Little bit of bad news on that. We did receive our census numbers, and we're going down about 603 in population from the special census. We are up from the 2000 census, but we did have a special census after the Oboltein Development went in. So, we're down from that population count, even though we're up from the 2000. But ultimately, it means a loss in revenue, about $55,000 to the General Fund annually, and another 15,000 to the Motor Fuel Tax Fund. And that will, that adjustment will be made in the final budget with those numbers. So, we're still going to be positive for next year, but not to the same extent as originally presented. And that's why you want to move slowly, because, you know, all these revenue numbers are still volatile and things can change. So, we're not going to bank on the revenue just yet. We'll just proceed slowly.
Gas goes to $5 a gallon. That'll make up the difference maybe.
Well, it would make up the difference in motor fuel tax, but then we'll be spending on that fuel.
Which brings up a good subject. I did notice each department's electric bill and gas fuel bill. And I know that's maybe not the right time to talk about it, but Trustee Bowlin call had pushed quite a while ago about biofuels and so forth. And, you know, it's something that we should really consider, because I think this summer's going to be, you know, pretty tough, tough time, or potentially a tough time for gasoline. So, maybe we can experiment with, like, the lawnmowers and such and see how it works out.
All of this is open for discussion, absolutely. We actually were going to present a fuel conservation, a draft fuel conservation policy, I think, on the 14th.
Okay. Let's move it along.
So, maybe that would be an appropriate time to talk about some of these other measures too.
The other one I wanted to bring up too, maybe we can talk about on the 14th, is small form factor wind turbines. Obviously, on the highway, we see these massive turbines, but they do make models for municipalities. They're smaller. And if you look at how much we pay for electricity to light our streetlights and so forth, it does add up. So, maybe it's something that we can maybe experiment with to see if there's some validity to that type of alternative means to generate electricity. I don't know if we can feed it back to ourselves, or we have to push it out to a grid or what, but it's certainly, I think, something that's innovative that we should consider.
Actually, that has come a long way, just in the last year. From my reading, I understand, it's very popular with schools.
Is it?
Throughout the country, that they do have a smaller sized turbine, like you mentioned, that is more for individual commercial buildings, which could include a municipal building. I don't have the details, but certainly I can find out.
Honeywell, I know manufactures something that's not too big and too obnoxious.
I do know by law that the comment has to buy any excess that you produce back into their grid system. So, if you do produce more than what you need, that they are supposed to be buying it back.
That would be a good thing.
Yes, it would be.
Any other questions? President Davis?
Just a second.
Vitas, just something I thought of is, do higher fuel prices mean that the state collects more money per gallon of gasoline that they sell? And does that translate into higher returns on our end or no?
I believe on the state gasoline tax, that is the case because it's a percentage of sales. On the federal, it is not because it's based on gallons sold and not the price of the gas.
Okay.
So, I do believe the state gasoline tax receipts do increase as the price of gas goes up.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Did we get to NESRA yet or?
Yeah, we did.
Okay. Could I ask a question about NESRA?
Sure.
Just a couple of quick ones. So, there's a contribution component, and there's a capital outlay of component, and then there's an engineering service component in the detail of the budget. You explained the engineering service. So, I take it the capital outlay is what we contribute to it? Does that come from the General Fund?
No, the way it's explained to me, we levy a tax, we collect the levy, we transfer NESRA's port-
Or do we transfer it all to NESRA?
They take so much of it for their operations, and then the excess, they put in a separate fund that's earmarked for us. And then we get to draw that money back to reimburse for our projects.
Like the top line and so forth?
Right. So, the money passes through us going out, and then we get some of it back for projects. So, what we budget for projects is based on what they estimate is how much money is in this pool that's available for us to draw back on. And so, we only budget what we know there's money for reimbursement.
So, when we levy our taxes in general, a component of it is for NESRA?
That's how I understand it.
Last year, the NESRA used, out of our $289,000 that we gave to NESRA, they used roughly $130,000. So, we had $159,000 in our fund to use.
Okay. So, just as another quick question, in the 2009-10 budget, there was a capital outlay of $567,000 and a contribution of $282,000. Does that mean we had many projects going on equating to 500?
I believe that was all Twin Lakes projects.
Twin Lakes, okay.
And once the project's finished, we'll be getting half that from the OSLAT grant.
Okay. Because it goes down substantially in 2010 and '11 and a little bit.
We don't have those bigger projects. Those are Twin Lakes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anything else? And connective?
Just, I need more sort of details. But of course, I have, Vitas covered a bit part of it here, but I have a sheet on the significant changes.
Does anybody have questions on the water supply or the wastewater?
Significant changes that were provided in the packet. Get into, Vitas touched on a number of these in his report. So, I'd say the major change in the water is lesser capital projects with the addition of the North Yale Project this year and reduced engineering related to the capital projects as well. And then some reduction in salaries for the early retirement on the plumbing inspector position and then the transfer of a position to wastewater, which Vitas had touched on. Lower water expenses because we have lower consumption, but of course, lower revenues that correspond with that, lower sales. So, those are the significant changes, again, overall substantially reduced mainly because of the capital projects and the engineering reductions with completion of large projects.
And let us hope for no increase from the DuPage Water Commission.
Good luck.
Any questions on that?
No, sir.
Trustee Bowlin.
If we do see an increase from the DuPage County Water Commission, I've brought this up before, can we go back and try to recoup what it might cost us? If there is a cost involved? If the trickle-down effect, you know, hits the village and we end up having to pay for some of their costs when they created the problem to begin with, kind of thing? I mean, is there any retribution, I guess, is what I'm asking? Can we go back and hammer them for some of the money?
The residents or?
No, the fees.
Water Commission.
Yeah, the Water Commission, a big debacle, the missing funds and-
I don't know if the municipal members have discussed that particular issue, but it sounds intriguing, though.
Yeah. I mean, it doesn't hurt to ask.
Sounds like a legal question that might be worth asking.
Yeah. I mean, I wonder if we could. How wait for the attorney?
Well, if there are no more questions, any final comments?
Mr. President.
Trustee Blanket, I keep wanting to say President, I don't know why. Trustee Blankets.
President Protam, I think you did a fine job tonight, and I want to congratulate you.
Well, thanks. Anybody else have any comments?
General comfort level in advancing these projects to the full budget then at this point, with these funds?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
I do have one comment because we came on late due to power failures. President Colleton is not here tonight due to an illness. He was here all day from 8:30 this morning until 6 something. But he is ill, that's why he's not here tonight, and that's why I'm in the fancy seat. So, just wondered to leave a message along. Okay. Item number, you got your direction, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Item number four, consider executive session, RE 5 IL CL classes, CS 12, 120 slash 2, C1 personnel matters. Can I have a motion to consider executive session?
Mr. President.
Trustee Taglia.
Move for executive session.
Is there a second?
Mr. President.
Trustee Bowlin.
I second the motion.
Go for a roll call vote on that.
Trustee Blanket said?
Yes.
Trustee Balthus?
Yes.
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Bowlin?
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
Okay. Call for adjournment. Thank you Villa Park for watching, and have a good week.
Hit the cap.
Oh, yeah.
Now it's official.